Catch of the day video news. We're at Newton Public Schools and there's going to be a public hearing on the Israel anti-Semitism in the public schools. I don't know why this has brought such a big meeting. Maybe there's other things on the agenda, but I'm catching the day video news, prom film registry news, and I'm here covering the event. And it's Tuesday night, November 27.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started in about five minutes. If you haven't signed up and wish to do so to speak, you can do so out in the lobby on one of many sign-up sheets. But we do need to wait to 6:30 to start, just because that's how we posted the meeting. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. That might be a little loud. I wanted to welcome everyone to the school committee public hearing of November 27, 2018. This hearing is in response to a citizen's petition to address a series of measures requesting the school committee to take actions. In the words of the petitioners, and I quote, "to redress and repair alleged damage to the public caused by the teaching of anti-Israel and anti-Semitic and Islam-based material, and by failure and refusal of the Newton Public Schools to teach students in an objective, non-propagandizing way." End of quote. Tonight, we will hear from anyone who wishes to speak on this topic. If you would like to speak and have not signed up, there are sign-up sheets in the lobby. Before we begin, I will outline what will happen tonight and how we will conduct ourselves. First, what will happen? A public hearing is an opportunity for the public to speak on the posted topic. This means that you may only speak to this topic. If you wish to make general comments on other topics to the school committee, please write us a letter or come to the regular school committee meetings. Dates are posted on our website. This evening, we will give every person the opportunity to speak for up to three minutes. We will read out several names at a time, and you will come to the closest podium. There are two at the bottom of the aisles. Stand in line, and when it is your turn, state your name and address and begin your comments. No one shall speak more than once, nor may someone transfer their time to someone else. If you have mobility issues, we ask that you move to the reserved seating in the front row, or at a certain time, raise your hand, and we will bring a portable mic to you so that you may speak. The timer will be posted on this screen. No one will speak for more than three minutes. If you speak more than three minutes, we regret that the microphone will be turned off, and we will move to the next speaker. I encourage you to be succinct. There are several hundred people in the room times three minutes. You do the math. When everyone who signs up has had an opportunity to speak, the public comment portion of the meeting will end. Then the school committee will deliberate on each of the six measures listed on the posting of the public hearing and take actions that we deem necessary. Once the school committee begins deliberations, there will not be another opportunity for the public to speak at this meeting. How we will conduct ourselves. In order to hear from everyone and deliberate with thought and attention to all who have spoken, it is imperative that we maintain a courteous and respectful environment in the auditorium. Our goal is to be fair to everyone. Please, no applause, cheering, or booing, or any other disruptive noise during or between speakers. This will prolong the hearing and make it difficult for the committee to hear everyone. If you wish to express solidarity with a speaker, please do so silently. Please refrain from speaking loudly to your neighbor. This can also make it difficult to hear. You are welcome to take conversation out to the lobby. Speaking for more than your allotted three minutes, we will need to turn off the microphone. You are welcome to leave your comments with the secretary, and the school committee will read them. We ask that everyone be polite and courteous. While you should feel free to express your opinion, we ask that you refrain from expressing disrespectful or discriminatory thoughts about other groups or individuals who might be present. Comments about individual, Newton Public Schools faculty, staff, or students other than the superintendent will not be allowed. This hearing is not about individuals, but about the Newton Public School system. If you are referring to your child's teacher or your teacher, it is acceptable to say "my teacher" or "my student's teacher." You will be asked to sit down or leave the auditorium if you cannot comply with these rules of order. Vice Chair Steve Siegel will be calling up people who have signed up in small groups. Please proceed to the closest microphone. When you are finished speaking, please move quietly to your seat or exit the auditorium. New TV will be recording this hearing for public viewing, but it is not livestreamed. Members of the public may make an audio or video recording. However, you must inform us that you are doing so per mass general law. So if you are recording and you are not a member of the press, please write a note and bring it up to one of Janelle or Lisa, who are down in the front row. I need to notify the public that you are doing so. And without further ado, we will move on to the public hearing portion of this meeting. So our first speakers.
All right, I'm going to read off six names, and again, if you'll please come to the closest microphone. When we go through six, I'll read off six more names, and we'll work through the list that way. First name is Reverend Crowley, Susan Albright, Kate, I believe it's Manelli, Manelli, Theodora, Batschavirova, Neil Heffron, and Sandy Young.
Good evening. My name is Brandon Thomas Crowley, and I'm the pastor of Myrtle Baptist Church. The very rich history of our congregation, Myrtle Baptist, began with Newton's early black residents, several of whom made their home after relocating from the west end of Boston in the mid-1800s here in Newton. In 1873, records show that there were at least 130 blacks living in the city of Newton. And First Baptist Church, which is now known as Lincoln Park Baptist Church, became their first spiritual home, some having been members of that congregation since 1869. Nonetheless, these congregants felt the need to worship in their own tradition and in their own way, with the freedom to sit in the front of the church as well as in the rear. They were encouraged to be separate, but not with feelings of unkindness towards our white brothers and sisters, but simply for the best good of all concerned. This shares with us our brief history as a congregation, that it is possible to be united as Newtonians while also recognizing our distinct differences as human beings from different backgrounds and different cultures. As a queer, ten-year servant of equality here in Newton and pastoring, my predecessor, Reverend Haywood, always shared with me that the Newton tradition emphasizes justice, equality, and tolerance. And as we know, anti-Semitism is unfortunately on the rise globally, and it needs to be condemned strongly. The critical perspective that is advocated by the Americans for Peace and Tolerance threatens this Newtonian ability to call out real anti-Semitism, as well as other forms of hate and discrimination, including racism and Islamophobia. So this evening, we call on everyone to educate themselves by reading "In Defense of Critical Thinking," to write to the Newton Tab, the Boston Globe, or WBUR, to contact the Newton Public Schools Superintendent David Fleishman, and to spread the word to all of your neighbors emphasizing that APT is hostile to Newton's core values. It claims to be concerned about bias in the curriculum, but in fact, it seeks to undermine Newton Public Schools' values of respecting the dignity of all persons and individuals despite their racial differences, religious differences, class backgrounds, ethnicity, sexual orientations, learning styles, or abilities. I ask that all persons please be reminded that students, that our students are ultimately the ones being hurt by these attacks, and that teacher...
Your time is up, Reverend Crowley. Let's hold the applause, everyone.
Good evening. I'm Susan Albright, and I live in Newton and have all my life. Before I begin, I'd like to explain my history in Newton. I grew up here and was bar mitzvah at Temple Emmanuel. My kids were also bar mitzvah at Temple Emmanuel, and when they were in Hebrew school, I was president of the PTO. I have a brother who lives in Israel along with his wife, and my nephews, and great nephews, and great nieces. I myself have been to Israel about six times, starting with my brother's wedding. I've been a member and chair of the school committee, and now I'm a member of the Newton City Council. I'm speaking as a concerned citizen against hate speech in our schools, hate speech in our city, and hate speech about Newton, which has spilled out into the country. Over the years, I've watched the developing storm about Newton's curriculum regarding the Middle East. I've listened to the accusations about our Middle East curriculum and its calls for its removal. My strong advice to you, my friends, and my colleagues on the school committee, as well as to the administration, is to hold fast and strong against censorship. You must reject the efforts of any group who is pushing their own agenda. Of course, any group has the ability to say whatever they want, but it's your job, the school committee and the administration, to reject bias. Our schools have a process to handle objections to the content of the curriculum. This process is fair and appropriate, and I know that in past, changes have been made on reasonable requests. It is totally inappropriate for any group to hijack a curriculum and demand that it no longer be taught. This is censorship in its purest form. The Anti-Defamation League said the Newton Public Schools do not have an agenda to delegitimize Israel and glorify Islam. We all know that the Middle East controversies are among the most complex of our world. Students must apply critical reasoning skills to tackle this complex subject. To do this, they need to understand every point of view. This does not encourage anti-Semitism, but to cut off learning may help to foster it. In the book Speak, Laurie Halsey Anderson wrote, "Censorship is the child of fear and the father of ignorance." I thank my friends on the school committee, in the administration, and on the faculty for standing fast in the teaching of this controversial topic. Thank you.
My name is Sandy Young, and I've lived in this city for about 20 years. I feel a very strong connection with Israel since I have traveled there many times since I was very young. I even lived there for a year while working at a hospital. I have family there. I have a cousin who is a rabbi in Carmel. His son is in the IDF, who stands proudly to defend Israel. I study the history of my people through Torah studies each week at synagogue. I find it heartbreaking to hear that young children aren't learning to love Israel as I have at a very young age. Israel is our best friend and most important ally. Why aren't the students being taught that? There can be no critical thinking on the part of the students without being taught the absolute facts. How can students decide for themselves what the truth is? Israel is the only democracy in the Middle East. If they weren't being attacked at all times, it would be the most peaceful country on earth. Jews have lived and worshipped there for 4,000 years. New archaeological digs have found the city of David right near Jerusalem that proves that very fact. Israel is constantly making important discoveries in modern technology, science, and medicine that impact the world. When there are natural disasters or other emergencies around the world, Israel is always the one to first respond. They treat all Israeli citizens equally, no matter what religion they are. They are constantly being attacked by rockets launched from over the border. When Israel responds to protect its people and its land, they are vilified. They have as much right to protect themselves and their borders as any other country. These are the undisputed facts that should be taught in Newton schools as well as all schools. Thank you.
My name is Theodora Batschavirova. Thank you for organizing this event, and thank you for coming. I'm not from Newton. I actually moved here from Houston three years ago, and I had a choice, to pick a school, to pick a community. We researched many different school districts. We researched many different schools before we settled here, and we came here for a reason. We believe in global education, which exposes our children to all kinds of things all over the world, and we actually founded here in Newton. Let me just tell you about what we're experiencing here. When we first moved here, we didn't know anybody. We were surrounded by teachers who were exceptionally graceful and patient, and really embraced us as a family, not just as a student and a mother. We were exposed to so many different things that really well beyond education, and it was because of our school district, and because of our teachers, and because of what they do on a daily basis and what they believe in. They really took us under their wings and are giving us world-class, global education, which presents us with diversity and knowledge that goes beyond the classrooms. Our kids actually are receiving education that is right up there with some of the higher education institutions that are based here in Boston, and all of you know what that means. They have a choice, and that is something that's exceptional, and something that is really coming to the school district, and I thank you for that.
Please remember to state where you live.
Hi, Neil Heffron. I live in Brookline. I grew up in Newton. I went to Countryside. I went to Meadowbrook. This all looks familiar. I went to Newton South. I was taught in this Newton progressive place, by some Newton progressive teachers, some benign things that at the time weren't, didn't affect other people. So when I grew up, they were talking about an ice age coming. They were talking about we're running out of oil. These things never came to fruition, but today, we're not talking about benign things. We're talking about things that are affecting people, which are anti-Semitic, which are putting our children at risk. The children are not being taught critical thinking. They're being taught something that's not fact, that's basically fiction. When you look at the camera information that was passed out, some of the documents have been altered. You know, the Islamic Hamas movement's covenant states many times over how they would like to kill the Jews, move the Jews out. It's not a land issue, it becomes a religious issue. And it seems that without going into this complicated issue, and just showing one side of something, it's not critical thinking. Critical thinking is having the ability to look at all sides. And, you know, I don't know if the children are taught anything about how the creation of Israel came about, modern Israel, the San Remo Conference, the Balfour Declaration, what happened when Jerusalem was divided for the first time ever in history from 48 to 67. These things, are they taught? That Jerusalem was always united? That when it was ununited, that the Arabs did nothing with that land? When they had the opportunity to make a state, nothing happened with it? So I would just like this city of Newton to actually show both sides of an issue, not just one side. And that's what should be done in school. Where people want critical thinking, give them both sides so they can make a determination. Thank you very much.
My name is Kate Manelli, and I'm an English teacher and varsity coach at Newton North High School. In choosing to begin my professional teaching career at Newton North, I fell in love with the values espoused by the Newton Public Schools. Among them, I particularly value that we recognize the uniqueness and dignity of individuals of differing races, religions, classes, ethnicities, sexual orientations, learning styles, and abilities. By building on the strength of our diverse community, I am excited to teach students the life skills of collaboration, critical thinking, honesty, and a respect for diversity. Recently, I have witnessed these values come under attack. Specifically, some of my colleagues have been falsely accused of bias and indoctrination, and unfairly defamed for fostering hatred. This is categorically untrue. Unable to sit by and watch this insidious vitriol, I spoke up in support of them and of all the values we uphold in Newton. As a result of speaking publicly in support of my colleagues, I found myself on the receiving end of a public records request by Americans for Peace and Tolerance, including a list of over 50 search terms, all unrelated to my curriculum. I am not alone. Numerous colleagues in various departments, history, English, math, even art, have been subjected to public records requests, an intimidation tactic intended to be both onerous and anxiety-inducing. Teachers are forced to spend hours outside of the school day combing through documents, time that would normally be spent in support of our students. As community members, you should know the impact these harassing requests have had on your children's teachers. While the requests themselves have only fallen on a group of individuals thus far, the chilling effect has been system-wide. I think I speak for most of us teachers when I say that I am hesitant to put anything into writing, in fear that it will be taken out of context, distorted, and used to further the false narrative against teachers. I am reticent to pose thought-provoking questions to my students. I am reticent to pose thought-provoking questions to my students, fearful that what I say in the classroom might be misperceived. Deciding what text to give my students gives me pause because I worry I'll be misjudged or mislabeled in my place of employment, the community where I work, or even nationally. I also worry that these false accusations will affect Newton's ability to hire and retain the best and brightest educators. In the end, our students are the ones who will suffer the most. I know that by speaking out today, I am again making myself vulnerable. I am again risking my reputation and peace of mind. However, it is worth it to me to speak out for the values of the Newton Public Schools that I initially fell in love with, the values that make me want to be a teacher. I am confident that you, the school committee, the Newton community, will join me in standing up for these values by supporting Newton educators and teaching students how to think and not what to think. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna read out six more names. I have Eileen Sandberg, Brian Barish, Max Kozlov, Mark Laredo, Jacob Gervis, and Finn Flaherty.
We're not taking comments from the public. If you would like to sign up to speak, go out in the lobby and sign up. Go ahead, Eileen.
I am Eileen Sandberg, and I have lived in Newton for 24 years. My five children have attended the Newton Public Schools. I am a Jew, and my children's grandmother and great-grandmother survived the Holocaust. I know that antisemitism can occur anywhere. Newton is a strong community where we care about education and about our neighbors. If you believe that your child has experienced bias in our schools, you have every right to ask for answers. It does not matter what race, or religion, or gender identity, or sexual preference you or your child are. It does not matter if your child wears a kippah or a hijab, a rainbow pin, or a Bernie Button, or a MAGA hat to school. All students deserve to feel safe at school. Newton is a diverse city, and sometimes it is not comfortable for all of us, but hate has no place in Newton. Let me be very clear: Newton parents who are concerned about bias are part of our community. These families must not be confused with outside groups who have undertaken the acts of harassment against our teachers. We need more dialogue within our community, both to explain what is actually taught in our curriculum and to talk about any hateful speech or actions and how to stop them. If you believe your child has been subject to bias, or hate, or hate speech or actions, the way forward is not in screaming insults or demanding that people get fired. I've worked with the district for many years around special education, and I know that it can be difficult and frustrating at times. I have learned the most effective way to address problems is to partner with the schools. You must speak out and be persistent, but in a civil and respectful way. Some have said that critical thinking is not the issue. How can we, as a community, fight bias if our young people are not prepared to evaluate the information they hear? The skills of critical thinking that our schools teach allow them to discern facts from misinformation, evaluate sources, and make up their own minds. I say to Newton residents tonight, if you have heard information from friends or the media saying there is bias in our history curriculum, I implore you to take another look at the facts and listen to the teachers here tonight. Use your own critical thinking skills, because there's a lot of inaccurate information out there. Remember that hateful acts done by students do not come from the curriculum. In fact, Newton's teachers and administrators are the first line of defense against hate speech and hateful actions that some of our students may take, and they work hard to teach all of our students to resolve differences respectfully. My kids have attended the Newton Public Schools for the past 22 years, and I do not know a single Newton teacher whom I believe would knowingly encourage hate speaks or actions or bias of any kind, or teach a biased curriculum. I know each member of the school committee, and I truly believe that there is not one of them who would stand for the teaching of hate in our schools. These are Newton's people. These are Newton's values, and we need to defend them. Thank you.
Let's hold the applause.
Hello, my name is Brian Barish, and I live at 161 Lowell Ave. in Newtonville. In my professional life, I work as the general counsel to a state senator. In that work, I am frequently approached by constituents or others with strident views who wish to see the law changed. Changing the law is no small thing. It must be seriously considered and studied. And when approached with this situation, as I often am, in addition to careful research and reaching out to stakeholders, more often than not, the most valuable information I receive is from those who take an opposing view on the subject. Only when hearing all sides of an issue can I truly understand the argument and decide how I should advise the senator I work for. This lesson from my professional life weighs heavily on me as we discuss curriculum in Newton's schools. If our students are not exposed to all perspectives, they will both be less prepared to understand the issues they are confronted with and to argue for the point of view which they ultimately choose to take. Our teachers, in turn, must be encouraged to provide these different perspectives. If they are constantly in fear of the response to diverse perspectives, it will discourage them from sharing positions that are unpopular or controversial in our community. This would be deeply misguided, and Newton's children would be the poor for it. I am proud to live in a community that values diversity of opinion, including minority opinions. Our communities, other communities in America, are deeply involved in their schools' curriculum. They make decisions for the schools about what should be taught. In Texas, an elected board votes on whether to teach about Hillary Clinton, or Oprah, or creationism. Is that what we want in Newton? Not me. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Max Kozlov, and I live at 98 Paxton Street in Newton, and I'm a proud alumnus of the class of 2016. I'm here to speak on behalf of the 406 and still counting Newton North graduates that have mobilized from all over the world in the last few days alone to support our Newton educators. We, the undersigned graduates of Newton North High School, write to support our teachers and our school system and their mission to craft a curriculum that promotes critical thinking. We affirm our opposition to Americans for Peace and Tolerance, a group whose members have been targeting our school system for years and have recently begun targeting individual teachers. The Newton North curriculum has not taught us what to think, but how to think critically and cross-reference with independent sources. In today's increasingly polarized and sensationalized discourse, such skills are particularly empowering and simply necessary. We hold that we learn to analyze multiple perspectives as a result of our teachers acknowledging their own lived experiences and consciously encouraging us to find primary sources to both support and oppose their points of view. As former students, we saw firsthand that our Newton teachers are genuinely and deeply committed to supporting their students' academic and personal growth. Differing ideas in the classroom did not lead to isolation or arguments, but to genuine discussion and a focus on supporting our views with independently verified and peer-reviewed sources of evidence. To penalize any educator for their efforts to provide students with a comprehensive, global education would be in direct contradiction of Newton Public Schools' own goal as expressed in its mission statement: to ensure all students become knowledgeable, responsible, caring and contributing members of society through evidence-based social and emotional learning from preschool through high school. These teachers have always encouraged student self-expression, and we felt our opinions voiced in their classrooms were heard and treated with the utmost dignity. Sincerely, 406 alumni, one member of the class of 55, one member of the 56, one from 1970, one from 1987, 1989, 2001, 2006, three from 2007, 21 from 2010, three from 2011, two from 2012, 29 from 2013, 61 from 2014, 54 from 2015, 75 from 2016, 60 from 2017, and 80 from 2018. Thank you.
Chair Goldman, Mayor Fuller, members of the school committee. My name is Mark Laredo. I live at 31 Fillmore Road in Newton, and I'm gonna just provide some very brief remarks here this evening because I want to make sure that others get an opportunity to speak. As I think many of you know, I'm currently the president of the Newton City Council. I'm a councilor-at-large from Ward 7. I've had the privilege of serving on the city council for nearly seven years now, and before that, I served on this body as an elected member of the school committee from Ward 7, as vice chair, and ultimately as chair of the committee. I grew up here in Newton. I attended the public schools, as did my siblings. I'm a proud member of Newton North High School, class of 77. I want to add my name to the list of people who signed that petition. And my wife and I have raised our three kids here, and we're very proud and very happy with the Newton schools. I also am a Jew. My parents were immigrants from Europe. My father fled Nazi Germany. My mom was a child survivor of the terrorism concentration camp. We are members of Temple Emmanuel in Newton, where our children have all been bar or bat mitzvahed. And I believe passionately in a strong and secure state of Israel. So in that context, I want to be clear and unequivocal that I support how you, as our school committee, and how you, Superintendent Fleischman, have responded to the complaints that have been made to you about how we deal with the Middle East. I think you've done an admirable job in dealing with that. And I want to be very clear that I stand in firm support of our outstanding teachers. They are encouraging and continue to encourage our students to be thoughtful, independent, and critical thinkers. And in closing, I want to be very simple: please deny this petition. And let's continue to stand by the school committee, and let's continue to stand by our educators. Thank you.
My name is Jacob Gervis. I'm from West Newton, and I'm part of the graduating class, Newton North, from 2016. And I'm gonna share a few words from my 2014-2015 U.S. history class with Mr. Bebar. It's been almost four years now since I've seen in person many of the people who have helped give voice to this letter and to this hearing, and it may be another four years or even longer before some of us ever cross paths again. Nevertheless, we will always share one bond, and we've all decided for this one night and in this one letter to look back at our paths and talk about the stop we all made along the way: Newton North High School. There are many ways to describe Newton North. Some have chosen to call it biased, intolerant, a community of people prone to isolating those with whom they disagree. And they have every right to choose these words, but we also have the right to disagree. And so in our disagreement, my fellow alumni and I would like to give you all some of the ways we choose to describe our school. We choose to describe it as an institution for critical thinking, and that is because Newton North has taught us to think critically, to analyze and to question. It has taught us to observe multiple perspectives, to recognize the value in discussion, and to listen to the opinions of those we disagree with. To that point, it has taught us not to push our heads into the sand when differences of opinion arise, but rather to engage, to speak out, and to debate opposing ideas rather than to ignore or silence them. We choose to describe Newton North as a place of tolerance. After all, tolerance is having the wherewithal to engage with the community even when difficulties arise, rather than to censor them. Tolerance is the civil collection that we've chosen to attend tonight. Tolerance is the acceptance of opinions, the willingness to communicate when we are unsure of how to proceed, the sense of community necessary to answer the questions of our peers without persecuting them. Tolerance is a place we can all go to lay bare our anxiety, our fear, our stress, an oasis to cleanse us of worry even in our times of greatest uncertainty. We choose to describe Newton North as a wonderful place of learning, a diverse community of people from all walks of life, a utopia of creativity, and so much more. I wish I had the time to tell you about even more words that we choose. I know I can't convince everyone in this room just by throwing some words around for three minutes. I know some people here are genuinely upset and angry at Newton North in any way, but just for a moment, I'd like to appeal to you all, not as alumni of Newton, or Newton North, not even as speakers of this hearing, not even just as a kid from Newton trying to find his way, but as a human who hopes for the best for all of our futures. Regardless of your political stances, your religious beliefs, or your personal views, wouldn't you want your child, or any child for that matter, to go to a school that would prompt an overworked, sleep-deprived college student to take the time out of his day to write a speech in support? Wouldn't you want them to be taught by teachers they look up to even years into their adult lives? How often is it that you ask your child, or any child, to write about a subject he cares a lot about, and that subject is school? For us, school is that subject, and we hope that we might preserve Newton North and the Newton Public Schools so that that subject might be for future alumni, too.
Thank you. Pull it up. I think it needs to be pulled up. There you go.
Hi, my name is Finn. I live at 102 Los Angeles Street in the lake, as well as at 30 Hazelwood Street in Roxbury. I graduated from Newton North six months ago and have since come to work at an educational nonprofit in Boston Public Schools. And it's been a long time since I've been surprised, but I will never cease to be disappointed with what this city chooses to spend our energy on, and that includes myself. We are a de facto segregated city with real problems. It wasn't long ago that swastikas were found in our bathrooms. I know because I found some. And here we are indulging in attempts to punish our teachers for taking a risk to provide a quality education to their students. I will say, when I was a junior, about five minutes ago, I... Thank you. I was not sure which classes I wanted to take. I had more freedom to take classes in senior year. I wasn't sure which ones I wanted to take. And one teacher ended up talking to me about a class, which was, he was taking a risk. He was talking about the Middle East, Latin America. I don't remember what the A stands for, I'm sorry. I didn't end up taking the class. But he was taking a risk. He was taking a risk by covering many sides of issues, some of which he knew would be unpopular, as, let's look around us, they obviously are. And he ended that speech by saying, yes, I know I'm taking a risk, but I haven't been fired yet. And as many problems as I've had through the years in this school system, in this city, I have had many, this was a moment where I could be proud. I was proud of my school, of my school system, of my city. I was fiercely and immensely proud that we were a city that let our teachers take risks like that to educate their students the way we and every student deserves. So let's not change that. Thank you.
The next round of six will be Paul Hartnett, Joyce Holman, Rebecca Cantor, Carolyn Cohen, Rachel Layton, and Pat Aquatina.
I am Rebecca Cantor. I live at 617 Chestnut Street in Newton, as well as in Los Angeles. And since graduating from Newton North in 2010, I've been working to understand how high school can better prepare students for work and life, so much so that my company has raised over $23 million in pursuit of providing better standardized tests to evaluate the critical thinking our students do at school. And I've come to see that what matters most in this time especially is deeper reasoning. These skills are required for any variety of occasion, and tonight, APT and its supporters, regardless of their justifications, threaten our school's ability to provide our students with the quality education they need for adulthood. But what we're really here addressing tonight is just one of many instances of alt-right affiliates with political agendas attempting to hijack and warp our curriculum. Similar efforts have re-authored AP U.S. History. They've stripped science curricula of any content around climate change or global warming. And as APT is trying to do, these efforts have also tried to portray their stewards as victims fighting for righteous ends, while also painting their opponents as unpatriotic, close-minded bigots. In Newton, we are too wise, too nuanced in our evaluation of facts for these sinister attempts to land. Our public schools have a duty to our students, not to APT or Fox and Friends, or parents looking to politicize high school history class. In Newton, our public schools teach reality so our students are ready to face reality. And teaching students about the Middle East means giving them access to a representative sampling of information. Teaching materials that our schools use may or may not be in line with your own personal beliefs, and that's okay. In fact, it's good, because that's life, and that's the daily news. In Newton Public Schools, our curriculum asks students to read, consider, and empathize with both Israeli and Palestinian grievances. Doing so does not make Newton Public Schools antisemitic. It makes our system a challenging voice for organizations like this one here, APT, that are trying to promote just one view and omit inconvenient truths to muffle. The politicization of how and what our schools teach threatens our democracy by both compromising institutions that exist to serve the full public, not just an extremist faction, and by intentionally sheltering our students from navigating real-world complexity. It's time for our community to make clear that not all of Trump's, the Federalists, and Fox and Friends viewpoints are legitimate. This viewpoint is not. Points of view that are not grounded in fact, that are made-up recounts of history trying to just further political agendas are illegitimate. trying to just further political agendas, are illegitimate, and they will not receive airtime in our schools. Embracing nativism and nationalism as legitimate philosophies to be protected by schools would mean welcoming hate into our classrooms. APT and its alt-right cousins whine and bully and pretend to be victims, all to bring fringe views into mainstream discussion. The fragrant rise, the evil harassment, and the opportunity cost of thousands of hours of good people's time—we—
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Caroline Cohen. I reside at seventy-three Bonnet Road. I'm currently a senior at Harvard College, and I'm a graduate of the Newton North class of 2015. I unequivocally support my teachers from Newton North and the Newton Public School system, which fosters an educational environment in which each one of its students is welcome, challenged, and respected. In an age where discerning between fact and fiction has become increasingly challenging, the critical thinking skills I acquired while a student at Newton North have proved invaluable to me. I was never taught the opinions of a single thinker as fact, but rather given various and often opposing primary sources to make sense of, both on my own and in discussion with my classmates. My years of history at Newton North instilled in me a spirit of inquiry that has led me to pursue history and political science in college. At North, I was drawn to the opportunity to understand our past from a variety of perspectives and make sense of how diverse opinions and actions have shaped the world in which we live today. Had my history education been based in bias or presented as a singular opinion, I would not have developed the same interest in the subject, nor the critical thinking skills that I gained at Newton North. I'm incredibly appreciative to have attended schools in a system that valued diversity of thought and background, challenged me to think critically, and instilled in me the importance of respecting the opinions of my fellow classmates. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rachel Layton. I've lived in Newton my whole life, at fifteen Charleston Park, right near Newtonville. And I'm currently a sophomore at MIT. So let me start by saying that I am Jewish. I'm a pro-Israel Jew, and I'm a political conservative, probably the most conservative person in any of my classes at Newton North. And to be honest, I felt like my opinions at Newton North were not only welcomed, but encouraged so that students would be able to have a diverse, like, range of perspectives that they see, and to be able to argue and, you know, debate with me, all—of course, all in, like, a friendly way, and there was never—there were never any issues. My teachers always encouraged me to share my views. I never felt like anything anti-Israel was taught to me. And if I were to debate classmates, it was—there was never any antagonism or antisemitism or any kind of bias for that matter. It was just a good, critical-thinking discussion. So I'd like to stand in support of the Newton School's curriculum and things that I've—like, everything that I've learned there, and in support of my teachers, who welcomed my opinions, though they were different from others, and accepted critical thinking and open debate. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Paul Hartnett. I live at one Rayburn Terrace in Newton Highlands. I have three children, all of whom graduated from the Newton School Systems. And we've lived in Newton for thirty years. My experience with the Newton Schools is that it's an excellent system with excellent teachers who work very hard every day to do what needs to be done to keep our kids safe and educated. I'm also a big fan of the First Amendment and free speech. And I believe very strongly in diverse opinion of all kinds. And, well, I didn't go to Newton High School and learn critical thinking. I went to Norwood High School down the road. Even a kid from Norwood High School can look at something like this and the petitioner's points of view and can say, quite honestly, that this is nonsense. This is nonsense and a waste of time. And the—I—I—in my view, the premises that are set out here are clever, but they're distorted and defamatory. And they're supported by gibberish masquerading as fact. And it would be my recommendation to this committee to simply recognize that this is nonsense, to thank the petitioners for their efforts, however misguided, deny the petition, and send them home, and get back to work. This committee has much more important things to do, and so do our teachers. Thank you.
My name is Patrick Aquatina. I live on Com Ave. I graduated from North in 2014. And I, too, was a conservative at North. And I'm sure everyone knows your stuff about being conservative at North. I was always the most outspoken conservative in my classrooms. My opinions were always respected, just as Mr. B. R. and many others once here tonight. And I felt compelled to come here and speak for their behalf. I was certainly not indoctrinated. I was always encouraged to speak my ideas with facts and listen to my peers and hear their facts. Our teachers taught us to have a civil discourse and respect all ideas. My overwhelmingly positive academic experience at North and history courses in particular inspired me to earn my degree in political science and pursue a career in public service. I'm a better person and citizen for having had the privilege of attending Newton Public Schools. The outrageous allegations against Newton's honorable and talented educators are completely unfounded. Thank you.
I think we're gonna go to the mobile mic for a couple of minutes. Lisa, were there—where'd you go, Lisa? Okay, we're gonna take a couple—if you need a mobile mic, just raise your hand. We'll take a couple people. Right up here, and one down here? Okay. All right. Every—yeah.
I'd like to make a different comment. So everybody who has signed up will get a chance to speak. And what I'd like to do is—the mobile mic will come to you if your name is called and you're not able to walk up to the microphone, but I'm gonna keep it going in the order that I've set up. Thank you.
I'm Joyce Holman. My name was called.
Yes.
I'm speaking as an active, committed Jew, as a parent, as a Newton resident for over fifty years, to support what the school committee and the Newton Public Schools are doing. I've looked at the curriculum materials that are allegedly biased. I find—from what I see in them—I see a lot of diversity, a lot of attempt to present varied viewpoints.